Hello, Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee. We're here today for two hearings. I'm Eric Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee, joined to my left by Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District Vice Chair of the Committee, and to his left, Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District Member of the Committee. We have staff from Mayor Brandon Scott and Council President Nick Mosby's offices, respectfully, ma'am. If you could please introduce yourself.
Yes, thank you. Hello, my name is Nia Garrett, staff from the Office of Council Services.
And Nia will be the new staffer for the Ways and Means Committee. Very much looking forward to working with you, Nia. We have two bills today. First bill is Council Bill 22-0301, Sale of Property, 844 Roundview Road. We'll start with the Law Department, favorable approval for form and legal sufficiency.
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Department of Finance, not opposed?
Correct, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Department of Housing and Community Development, favorable?
Yes, we stand behind our favorable report.
Thank you. Department of Real Estate, favorable? Excellent. Department of Planning?
Planning stands by its bill report.
Favorable. Perfect. And Board of Estimates must be approved by BOE. Colleagues, are there any questions for our agencies? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to testify on this matter? If you could please come up, please press the button on your right when you get up there. That'll turn the microphone red. Once that's on, you're good to speak. If you could please say your name and who you're with, and take it away.
Good morning. My name is LaShaw Callum, and I'm the Executive Director of the Cherry Hill Development Corporation. I'm here with my colleague and my partner, Vonnit Harris, the President and CEO of the Kairos Development. We extend our gratitude to the Ways and Means Committee for affording us this opportunity to address you today.
Yeah, can you come a little closer to them? Yep, there you go.
Is that better?
Yep, perfect. Thank you so much.
Okay. We are here to emphasize the significance of authorizing the sale of Patapsico Elementary School to the Cherry Hill Development Corporation. This transaction is pivotal in our ongoing efforts to advocate for our community and enhance the socioeconomic conditions of Cherry Hill. The transfer of Patapsico Elementary School to CHDC holds immense importance in achieving our objectives. Firstly, it empowers us to further our mission in constructing quality homes for Cherry Hill families, ensuring they have access to safe and sustainable housing options. Secondly, it serves as a cornerstone in enhancing the development capacity of the long, excuse me, and the long-term sustainability of our organization. Cherry Hill stands as a quaint yet resilient gem nestled amidst Baltimore's peninsula. With the heartbeat and resilience of its ancestry, this historic African-American community boasts a rich heritage of triumph over adversity. From elected officials to prominent business owners, educators, attorneys, faith leaders, and community advocates, each individual has woven their story into the vibrant fabric of this community. It's these collective contributions that have brought us to this pivotal moment in time. Today, this Ways and Means Committee has an important decision to make, permitting the mayor and city council the authority to transfer the title of Patapsico Elementary School to the Cherry Hill community, so that we, Cherry Hill Development Corporation and our partners, can build new affordable homes for Cherry Hill families. If the committee might indulge me for a few moments, I would like to outline the significance of this decision. Approving the sale of Patapsico Elementary to CHDC sends a powerful message to the Cherry Hill community. We are seen, we are valued, and worthy of investment. This decision signifies an end to waiting on the sidelines, no longer relegated to the outskirts of the city's economic agenda. It's a declaration that Cherry Hill is not just a priority, but a vital contributor to the city's growth and prosperity. Patapsico Point serves as a prime example of equitable community development, embodying the goals, objectives, and principles outlined in DHCD's Framework for Community Development. Originating from a comprehensive six-month master planning process led by CHDC, this visionary project is deeply rooted in community inspiration. Aligned with the 2020 Cherry Hill Transformation Plan, Patapsico Point capitalizes on the community's strengths while forging vital connections with ongoing investments in Port Covington, Middle Branch Park, and the Middle Branch Fitness and Wellness Center. This development represents a proactive approach prioritizing community needs and aspirations. As a build-first, community-focused initiative, the Patapsico Point is committed to fostering a mixed-income environment, catering to families with incomes from 30% to 80% of the average, excuse me, of the area median income. Crucially, it seeks to challenge and reverse the effects of past government-endorsed racist policies that have historically marginalized and under-resourced the community, both privately and publicly. Through Patapsico Point, we aim to chart a new course towards a more inclusive and thriving future for Cherry Hill and its residents. Patapsico Point represents a pivotal step forward, offering new, energy-efficient homes designed to alleviate the housing cost burden for families. This development will make a modest, yet meaningful contribution to addressing Baltimore City's pressing need for affordable housing options. Moreover, Patapsico Point is committed to supporting local businesses with our development team comprised of several Baltimore-area firms. Furthermore, Patapsico Point prioritizes diversity and inclusion, providing opportunities for minority and women participating in every level. Today, we stand before you as two African-American, women-led organizations spearheading a complex real estate transaction. Our presence here serves as a testament to progress and inclusivity in action. Both CHDC and Kairos proudly hold a 20% ownership and equity stake in the project, showcasing our unwavering commitment to community involvement and empowerment. Furthermore, CHDC's right of first refusal ensures that community ownership remains a priority even after the tax credit compliance period, solidifying our dedication in fostering lasting community empowerment and ownership. I implore the committee to reaffirm the city's stance in endorsing the community-led initiatives, where those most affected have a genuine voice and the opportunity to shape economic development projects in their neighborhoods. As Patapsico Point is a community-driven endeavor, there is no room for hidden agendas, information gaps, or lack of participation. The concerns of our community are and will always be paramount. It's worth noting that this development will not displace any low-to-moderate-income households, further cementing our commitment to preserving the fabric of our community. CHDC's role in this project is backed by the overwhelming support of the community, as evidenced by the numerous letters of support we've received. In conclusion, Patapsico Point stands as a multifaceted initiative that addresses several critical needs of our community. It effectively combats blight, expands access to affordable, energy-efficient housing, is driven by community input and involvement, creates ample opportunities for minority and women participation, facilitates community ownership, strengthens the capacity of local nonprofit, complements ongoing local investments in and around Cherry Hill. For these compelling reasons, I am confident that you will see the immense value in approving the sale of Patapsico Point to Cherry Hill Development Corporation. Once again, I extend my sincere gratitude for your time and attention to this matter. We are fully prepared to address any questions or concerns the committee may have. Thank you.
Ladies, thank you so much for your excellent work in Cherry Hill. That's probably the most well-prepared piece of testimony that I've heard in a very long time. So the unfortunate news is we're not going to be able to vote today because we don't have a quorum of the committee. And normally, I don't do this, but I do want to note that Councilwoman Porter from the 10th District, who represents the area, is supportive of this. I know that Council President Mosby is supportive of this. I am supportive of this, and I believe my other two colleagues on the committee. I hate to spot you all publicly, but I believe everyone is in support of this.
Yes.
So I'm hopeful that when the other four members are present on Monday, we'll be able to move forward on this. So again, I don't want to speak for anyone who's not here, but thank you so much. Colleagues, do you all have any questions? Okay, with that, we are going to go into recess on this hearing. You do, we've also been joined by Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District. We're going to go into recess. We have, the next regular meeting of the City Council is on Monday at 5:00 PM, so my intention is to call for the committee to reconvene before Monday at 5:00 PM, so at some point on Monday. So that'll be posted on the Baltimore City Council website. I do not think that we need you to come back. You are always welcome back, but I'm quite confident that we'll be able to proceed without you. But again, if you want to come back, just check the Baltimore City Council website. The information will be there. Thank you so much, ladies. Anyone else wish to testify on this matter? Okay, we are now in recess on that bill. We will now start Council Bill 24-0488, Supplemental General Fund Operating Appropriation, Mayor Ality Related Arts and Culture, $581,334. So a couple things we're going to do a little different. So we have Todd Yehunick, who is the CEO of BOPA currently. We have Andrew Chavez, who is the Chair of the Board. We've also been joined by Rachel Graham, who is the incoming CEO of BOPA. However, I've asked that Ms. Graham not testify today because she hasn't officially started yet. So I believe her start date is on March 15th. So we're going to reserve questions for Mr. Chavez and Mr. Yehunick. This is, as a reminder, colleagues, this is the fourth quarterly dispersment for BOPA for fiscal year 2024 as part of the budget arrangement we worked out during budget hearings in June of 2023. The presentation today is going to be led by Mr. Chavez and is going to focus on the work that the board at BOPA has been doing on governance-related issues. Mr. Chavez, I believe you have a presentation that we're going to pull up for you. Do we have a clicker for him to? We have a clicker, as my family affectionately refers to the remote control as. It's beautiful. And I'm going to ask you to take it away and try and keep it under 15-minute range.
You got it.
Thank you very much. And then, colleagues, we'll take questions and then testimony from the public.
You got it. Well, good morning, and thank you all very much for joining today. Again, my name's Andrew Chavez. I'm the Acting Chair of BOPA's Board and excited to give you an update on where we're at and what we've been doing to get governance, frankly, where it needs to be. Do I point at the?
No.
To you? To the screen? Perfect. Thank you. Thanks.
It's a great conversation.
Yeah, thank you. And also, thank you to Microsoft PowerPoint for the template. Okay, so what, there is actually a slide missing, I think, that came in a later version. But if we could go back one slide, just so I could pause before we dig into that. I think we did want to just kind of celebrate the work that has been done over the past year. We wanted to celebrate the successful return of Artscape, the successful return of the Book Festival this year that we're doing collectively and collaboratively with Councilwoman Ramos. We're excited that we've distributed over $500,000 in grants to artists locally on behalf of the city and behalf of HEMSAK. And then lastly, we've had dozens of exhibitions in all the various towers, in Bromo Towers, Top of the Worlds, and Cloisters, and School 33. So we're very proud of that work, and really, that is a huge thank and testament to Todd Yehunick, who came in at a rather trying time for the organization, and to bar any inner harbor metaphors, he calmed a stormy ship in the night, and we're just exceedingly grateful for that. So Todd, thank you for your time as interim. That being said, the Search Committee for the Permanent Position has selected Rachel Graham as the next CEO of BOPA. We're ecstatic for that. We believe that she has the energy and the enthusiasm to really bring it into the next stage of its life. Which brings us to what I think is the last piece of BOPA's puzzle, which is the board. So we can progress now. Thank you. So as we may have mentioned to this committee in the past, we did meet with a governance consultant who took a look at the inner workings of BOPA's board and came up with a list of recommendations, not just for an ideal board size, but also what does the board need to focus on. This is showing those points, and I think to basically summarize them, it's overseeing, and I want to highlight the immediate need to rebuild trust and responsive with the community. And that's intentionally put first. I think the artist community has long been looking for kind of champions for their work, and BOPA is obligated to do that with the taxpayer money that we receive. Next is to clarify the mission of BOPA. There was a strategic plan that was completed. I think that needs to be clarified and given some teeth moving forward, and that will be a goal of this interim board. Lastly, it's to have productive conversations with our partners, such as the city and the state, who are major contributors to BOPA's coffers and to the community. And then lastly, it's to oversee and select a new full board. So that is the main responsibilities of the interim board. Next slide. And to kind of give a shape of what they recommended as the final vision for BOPA, it's 17 board members is an ideal size, maximum of 25, broad representation of both the artist community, which I know has been frankly lacking in the past, is real input from artists. That being said, that's a topic that's nuanced, that we're trying to understand and look forward to collaborating with this council on how we can support artists who want to serve on the board while also being able to navigate the fact that many that I've talked to are reluctant, because the first question they ask is, can I still get money from BOPA if I'm on the board? So I think we need to balance our clear need to have artists on the board with the desire of the committee and the city to know that we're responsibly managing these funds without conflict of interest. And then the last, the last three points on here is something that we are going to be able to deliberate as an interim board, is understanding what is the city's involvement. Currently, BOPA is a quasi-public, quasi-governmental agency, and there's nothing really written in the bylaws that says the city must have representation or the council must have representation. Those are things we want to debate and understand. How can we do that in a way that is productive and collaborative moving forward? Next slide. So for the next year, we are putting together an interim board of approximately 11 to 13 members. We have reached out both to the Arts Council from the mayor's office and City Council for recommendations for people to include. And really, we're saying, we have one year. We have one year to kind of look at everything and kind of reconstruct our governance and get this right. Obviously, these board members will be welcome to continue on in normal cycles once that year is up. Next slide. Which gets us to the goals. Why are we actually getting this group together? And it goes back to the first slide, but I think most importantly, it is clarifying our mission. It is getting those relationships back in place with the community. It's taking a look at our bylaws and our governance structure. It's taking the lessons learned from what hasn't worked in the past and frankly, what led to some of the conflict and friction that we've had over the past, giving that structure, giving it life. And then lastly, understanding our relationship with the city, having honest conversations about how we can work together or support the desires of the city if they are to continue to fund BOPA. Another important point is strategic relationships with the community. I think in the past, maybe board representation has been narrow in its geographic and its focus for the city, so I think we want to have a conversation about how is that integrated? And then lastly, actually suggesting a list of 17 people who will serve on the permanent board. So those are the main goals for this year, trying to keep it focused and dedicated to what we need to do. Next slide. In order to develop a board, we need to have an honest look at who from our community should be on this interim board. First and foremost, cultural activists who know the ecosystem of our arts community, who know what has been going on that has been either supporting or suppressing their ability to thrive as artists. Next, we wanted people with kind of long-term board participation and an understanding of putting together an interim board and managing an interim board and having successful board operations. And I think, as any good board should have, your lawyers and your accountants to help guide those structures and lead the way there, especially as we look at bylaws and governance structure. Next slide. We've asked these individuals to commit for a year. We'll maintain our quarterly board meetings, but on the right side is really the committees that we're looking for this interim board to engage with, to do the actual work, to keep it focused to these committees, so that we're not distracted with other things that are important but will get in the way of us actually achieving our mission. It will be a year. There will be frequent committee meetings and also just a desire to support Rachel as CEO as she steps in. Next slide. Which gets us to our timeline. So we do have a board meeting on March 27th. The existing Small But Mighty Board will vote the interim board into existence, and they'll get to work. We'll have a board retreat in April. We'll be meeting regularly over the remainder of the year, giving regular updates at our quarterly board meetings. We want to give a mid-year presentation to this body or any other body that would be interested in the work in September. And then lastly, we'll have final presentations, February, March of next year, again, a list of recommendations to the final board, so that they can review those and adopt those as we redevelop a full and formal board. Next slide. And that's it. That's the plan. So thank you all again. I am excited about what this can be. I know there's work to do, but we have a solid group together to try and get this done and get us back to working order.
Thank you for the incredible work that went into this over the past couple of months to address many of the concerns that we raised during budget hearings last year. Appreciate your attentiveness to the concerns we raised. Colleagues, any questions? Councilman Stokes, then Dorsey?
I just have a question about the board. The board members, do they have to be artists themselves? And that's the first question.
I'm sorry, is the question, do they have to be artists?
Yes.
Will they be? They don't necessarily have to be artists in order to be on the board. Again, I think a point of conflict we're having is that when I've talked to a few artists, and even Jeffrey Kent, who is on our board now, who is a famous artist, very well-known, his concern is he's sacrificing his ability to participate in what BOPA can offer. And so I think that's a nuance that while we can say, sure, conflict of interest, just say it, I think we want to be above reproach in how we're distributing the city's money. And so I think we need to get written language on how does an artist serve on the board? What's the expectation?
May I have a question? Do they have to live in Baltimore City?
That's a good question. That will be debated by the interim board in terms of residency requirements.
So can you, I guess, send us back to the committee, those two questions? Because that needs to be clear.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who are these interim board members?
I'm sorry?
Who are these interim board members?
That's a list that we are finalizing over the next two days, and I'd love to sit down and share them with you.
I can't vote on this unless I know who this is. I've, like, I've got to be real clear about that. I've sat here for the last year and talked about the importance of having artist representation on the board. And while I understand the concern, the conflict that you've raised, that seems certainly pertinent to long-term, permanent membership on the board. And, but that it's actually really critical, I think, that they, that that be the case for the interim board. That has always been my position, that we absolutely need substantial artist representation in the process of making the bylaws for the board. That I don't think that there's a good way to navigate this whole issue of conflict of interest in the long-term ability to have artists on the board unless that's worked out with artists in the room during the creation of the bylaws. And, and that I believe that if we do have appropriate representation at this stage, that I think that it can be worked out. I think that there's a way that BOPA's bylaws can be written so that we can have artists on the board and not necessarily be precluded from participating in programming. I think that there's a way to understand the necessity and the importance of having artists on there and not precluding them from participation, and in a way that I think the public and we, the council members, and the mayor's office and everybody can accept. But I'm really firm that I can't support unless I know that that is going to be the case with this interim board, though I am really encouraged to see the presentation you've made here today. I think that it does recognize the things that I've brought up again and again. Thanks.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
When, I mean, so you're two weeks away from assembling this board. 15 days.
Yep.
You're finalizing this in two to three days? You said, in the next two to three days?
Correct, next two days.
Two days?
Yep.
Okay. And so you'll have that list in two days? Can you send that to us?
We'll have that final list in two days. And yeah, I just didn't want to share a list of recommendations publicly without having buy-in from everyone on that list. And so I'm more than willing to share, this is who it's going to be, and if there are any major, major concerns at that time, then we can adjust. But again, I think we've gone out, we've tried to develop criteria with which to bring on these members, while we kind of understand the nuance of the artist's conversation. So that's, that will be available in two days.
Can you, can you help explain this timeline to me again, just so I better understand? So in two days, so you currently have a draft list, if you will?
Yes. We, so, sorry to interrupt. We have about 10 commitments. There's, there's two more commitments that I've given a deadline of Wednesday.
So those potential board members need to confirm their willingness to serve?
Correct.
Got it?
Yep.
Okay. And then that will be wrapped up by Thursday of this week?
Correct.
And then what's the next step on your process, notwithstanding the request you've just received?
Well, really, at that point, I think it's, that is our list. That's who we've, we've agreed to serve. That's who's agreed to serve, inclusive of recommendations from council and the Arts Committee from the mayor's office. So that, that group will meet in two weeks, on the 27th, at our formal board meeting and be reconstituted.
And when do you, in that process, plan to publicly announce who those individuals are?
Yeah, I think that is a strategy I have not honestly formally discussed with the two remaining board members, but we hope to make an exciting announcement prior to the board meeting to...
But after the two days?
Correct.
Okay.
Not until we have confirmation, and obviously, we'd love to get buy-in from this committee, if that's something you'd like to say.
So I think if we're going to make that request, we need to have a commitment from the council, that if that information is shared, that we're not going to share that publicly?
That would be the request, yeah.
Okay. Councilman, is that something you can...
That's fine with me. Yeah, I just needed, I didn't know what this looks like before I could vote on it.
Yep.
Okay, got it. All right, very good. Colleagues, any other questions?
Yes, one other.
Please.
What is the logic of having fewer representatives put forth by the City Council than the mayor's office?
That was the recommendation that, that came from the Governance Committee, just, I guess it's a standard that, that is followed. So I personally do not know too much about that, but that's, that was a recommendation we received from Governance for the interim.
ICS has co-equal partners in Governance, so I would hope that we've had equal representation, if possible.
So I personally do not know too much about that, but that was a recommendation we received from Governance for the interim.
I see us as co-equal partners in Governance, so I would hope that we've got equal representation if possible.
Not everyone sees it that way, not referring to you.
Yep.
Thank you. Councilman, any other questions? Councilman Stokes?
Thank you very much. Really appreciate the due diligence and hard work that went into this, means a lot. Todd, want to take a moment to thank you publicly, and there will be other thank-yous coming, but really appreciate all the hard work and dedication to help get this thing back on track over the past year. We would not be where we're currently at with BOPA and in terms of improving the relationship with the city of Baltimore without your leadership, your close collaboration with the board, with the staff, with the city council, with the mayor and his administration. So really appreciate that. Ms. Graham, very excited to start working with you. I think you start working a couple of days at the new gig, so very much looking forward to that. I know we have many more great things to come from BOPA. We're going to go in recess now, and then we're going to reconvene...
At four?
Yep. Okay, so we're going to reconvene both of these hearings for Monday at 4:00 PM. Mr. Chavez, does that work for you? We will work around your schedule because this one, a little bit differently from the other one, I think it might be good to have you in case there's questions. And if four works, okay. Yep. Okay. Vice Chair Stokes?
I just want to thank Todd for your leadership, for kind of bringing this back into the room and cleaning up a little stuff that needed to be cleaned up. So your leadership, that's why we are now communicating more than we have with BOPA. Ms. Graham, look forward to your leadership and work with you also. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We are now in recess.